Welcome to the July 16th meeting of the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin this morning with an invocation by Reverend Hertzell Carter at Crosspoint Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with us.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude and thanksgiving in our hearts for your promise to always be with us and never leave us. And here we are, Lord, in your presence. We come before you giving you thanks for each person in this room today that you have created. Every citizen of this county that you have created in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves. And Lord, I thank you this morning for these your servants, these county commissioners and the county staff, the way they serve you because they've been chosen to have a call to serve in this county. Lord, your word makes it clear your expectations for those who sit in places of authority. Through the prophet Jeremiah, you remind us that your blessing came on kings who defended the rights of the poor and the needy. Through the Apostle Paul's writing in Corinthians, you said that those who are in authority first and foremost are your servants. That honoring you and doing your will is their highest purpose. That any portion of power they enjoy is given to you and given by you. And so, Lord, we pray that you would be glorified through the decisions of this county board. We pray that they would have the eyes to see how we're all connected and how our common good is upheld when we all listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray, Lord, that your kingdom would come in Okaloosa County as it is in heaven through your power working in each of these servants. May your truth be revealed. May your light shine brighter through this governing body this morning. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens of Okaloosa County. We pray this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Carter. We'll begin with the employee awards. Mr. Hofstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you know, it'd be impossible to get the mission of this county done without our 1,000 plus employees that we have here across a broad range of departments. We have a number of service awards this morning. I've won two-year award, a five-year service award, and two 10-year awards. So when I call your name, if you please come forward and stand with me, we'll get a picture afterwards. First, I'd like to recognize Emily Gorman. Emily is a visitor information specialist with the tourist development department. This is her two-year service. Next, I'd like to ask Stephen Dreading to come forward. Stephen is a correctional officer. This is his five-year service award with the corrections department. Next, I'd like to recognize Lance Jones. Lance is with the water and sewer department and he's a utilities GIS analyst too. This is his 10-year service award. And lastly, Deborah Thatcher. Deborah is a visitor information specialist with the tourist development department and this is also her 10-year service. I'll get a picture in front of the board.
Mr. Hofstadter, you have a county administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Very briefly, I just have a couple announcements. I want to remind the board that tomorrow morning at 7:30, we'll have the groundbreaking for the new ag extension center. That's in the south end over by the fairgrounds. Look forward to seeing everyone there. And then want to remind the board that we have our last budget workshop that's scheduled for next Tuesday, the 23rd. That will be here in Shalamar and we'll go with the final remaining departments and constitutional offices for the, uh, for the commission. So that's all I have, sir.
Ms. Hoshahara?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates today. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Just happy to be here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have visitors with us today from, um, Okaloosa Saves. If y'all would come forward, Ms. Sheri Harlow and Laura Cole. Good morning.
Is this, is this on? Okay. Okay, so hi, I'm Laura Cole. I'm the board chair of Okaloosa Saves and with me is Ms. Sheri Harlow, a founding member and current treasurer, and board director Kim Cox. So Okaloosa Saves is a part of the National America Saves Program founded in 2003 as a 501(c)(3) encouraging individuals to build wealth and reduce debt. Okaloosa Saves partnered with Eglin Federal Credit Union and the First Bank for the annual Teach Children to Save campaign April 1st through June 30th. So youth were encouraged to set a savings goal and make a deposit into their savings account. Their names were entered into a random drawing for six children to win a $50 deposit into their savings account from Okaloosa Saves. This year, there were 106 youths from Eglin Federal Credit Union and six youths from the First Bank under the age of 18 who participated with deposits totaling over $20,000. Since the program began in 2004, 2,398 children have made deposits totaling over $393,000. We especially like to thank the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners for your ongoing support of this program. And with that, we'd like to introduce some of the winners who are here today. So when I call your name, please come on up for your certificate and then we'll take a photo with the commissioners at the end of the presentation. I believe Norris was on his way. If he's not up here yet, he'll be making his way up later. Calvin Hopper. Santana Stewart. Anakin Tetter. And I believe Norris just arrived. Just on time. And I think we're ready for the, um, county commissioners to come on down for the photo. What's his name? Okay, yeah, Norris. Hi, Norris. I think Ms. Sheri has your certificate.
This is Emily.
Norris.
Norris. So good that you love it. This, I love already. I'm gonna have to take it to that.
Can you lower that a little so we can cover space?
It's not every meeting that we get family pictures. I have two speaker cards for public comment. If you have a desire to speak in the public comment, will you please see Mr. Tomelcheck in the back corner for a speaker card? First, we have Ms. Shirley Godbold.
There we go. I'm Shirley Godbold. I live at 65 Hillcrest Drive in Shalimar. Little did I realize that my topic of respect would be so important today and the fact of what happened on Saturday. But that's what I like to talk about is respect. For a little over a year now, a number of us have come before you with facts and information, sometimes serious and other times lighthearted, yet we often get the impression from a few of you that, oh, no, it's the terrible people from Baked Kito Bayou protecting Baked Kito Bayou with the red shirts on. I have watched you answer texts and play on your phone and laptops, and from time to time, I see the smirks on your face. If you were in my classroom, I'd call you out, but you're not. Everything we bring to you is important. Please become more respectful to what we're sharing with you. We come only because we know as a county commissioner, you cannot research this all on your own. Our purpose is to make Okaloosa County a better place to live, not only today, but more importantly, in the future.
Dave Hensley.
Good morning, county commissioners and officials. I'm Dave Hensley, One Bay Street, Shalimar. My topic today is the Florida Live Local Act. When I first heard about the first, the Florida Live Local Act, I wondered what this act was all about. So I Googled it online and got the following from a source online. The Live Local Act is a conference of statewide attainable housing strategy to design the increase, the availability of affordable housing opportunities for Florida residents who desire to live within the communities they serve. This framework provides historic recurring funding for housing to for housing very low and low to moderate income households. In addition to a multitude of new programs, incentives, and opportunities, this legislation works to focus on Florida's housing strategy and ways to make housing more attainable. Florida Housing will implement programs that will support development of multifamily residential housing, homeownership, and creative innovative approaches for all housing markets. Sounds impressive. Then I Googled, what are the good, bad points? You know, the whole movie Good, Bad, and the Ugly Solace. What are the good points and the bad points? All right. So originally designed to create more affordable housing, gaps in the in the Live Local Act force cities to push state lawmakers for change. It allowed affordable housing or apartments of any commercial, industrial, mixed-use property without council approval, said Carmen Ruimonda, a city manager for DeBra, Florida. That was on June 17th, 2024. Two weeks ago, I was down in Orlando, and I went over to the high school, have lunch with a whole high school buddy of mine. And he is currently on the Brevard Planning Commission. And he basically told me the same thing what this city manager stated about, you know, this this loophole with this Live Local Act. Now, what is Okaloosa County's assessment of the the Florida Live Local Act? Do you have similar concerns? You know, is it, do you fear that also? I'm just curious because two folks have told me that, and they're officials. Then another concern is what's the status of the modifying of the current land development code to limit clear cutting? That's the other question I have. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public requesting to make comment? Mr. Hensley, I'll briefly tell you two, two things to your questions. One is we did an affordable housing study. And I suggest you get a copy of that because it's great with some strategic plans, and it addresses some of the Live Local Act. In addition to that, Mr. Camper, who you've met with before, he has a great understanding of it and can answer your secondary question as well, potentially as items that can come back to the board. Yes, sir. Moving to the consent agenda. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, maybe this is, I think, is a question for Lynn. I just want to make sure we didn't get anything out of order here. Item eight appears to be a reapportment, but it is to the combined board, which I think will not be created until after the public hearing today. So I might suggest we pull that.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the consent. I say.
Motion by Commissioner Boils and a second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
There's no opposition. Passes unanimously minus eight. It's fair. We have three public hearings on today's agenda. The first is to consider an ordinance creating a combined electrical, mechanical, and plumbing competency board. Mr. Camper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have one public hearing from Growth Management this morning, and as the chairman said, this is the purpose of combining the mechanical plumbing and construction boards. You know, this is very straightforward ordinance. We have a number of boards assigned to the different construction trades, which oversee licensing and, if necessary, disciplinary and actions for our local contracting. This also provides a service to them because right now they're going to have a competency card. You have to work with the state to get your state licensure. By having a local board to sponsor them, this avoids them having to go to Tallahassee and work directly with the state on their licensure. So it's both a service and is also a possible disciplinary board as needed. We have in recent years had trouble maintaining membership on those boards. Volunteerism is getting harder to get, as I think we're all aware. And the members of the various boards have agreed that a good way to address this would be to combine these three boards with experts in those trades on this board so they can hear these applications. We've had no problem selecting the recommended membership that's included in the packet, and the board members are ready to go as soon as the board approves the ordinance if they choose to do so. No need to complicate it, but we have to answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Camper. Any public comment? For this item alone. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove this ordinance? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Ponder. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Sure. Thank you very much. Just a quick question. I know, Christian Bowles, we pulled that item from consent. Mr. Gordon is actually listed on this list of initial members. So does that qualify that reapportment, Lynn, or does we still need to pick that item up after this item?
Actually, we considered that, and technically, what this list is drawn from the existing members, and we're following their appointed terms. And because Mr. Gordon's term needs to be re-upped, we felt it was appropriate to let the board take that as an action. So simply putting him on here, we didn't think covered entirely.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a motion on the initial membership? Would that be acceptable?
I'll see. You're asking for.
What are you asking for?
Just that the recommended motion is to approve the initial membership. That was identified in there.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second motion to approve the initial membership. We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. Passes unanimously.
Out of an abundance of caution, I'll move consent item eight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously as well. Yes, sir. Thank you. The next public hearing is to consider a request to vacate portions of right-of-way adjacent to Block 102, townsite of Port Dixie, Shalimar. Mr. Autry.
Good morning, Jason Autry, Public Works. We have two public hearings that are right-of-way vacation requests, both of which have been presented before and then tabled for some policy revisions. However, if you recall, when we did make the right-of-way policy revisions, we specifically stated that they were not in effect until the date of that which these were submitted prior to. Therefore, these requests are what we have done for many years before. The first is from Ms. Doe. She has property as shown on the figure on the screen there that's at the corner of the Port Dixie Platte. She's requesting to vacate the 20-foot across the front and the side of her property. We've received no objections. There are no objections from the county side to this request, and if there are any questions from you, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, sir. This time, we'll open for public comment to this item. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Says in my district, I'll make the motion for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel and a second by Commissioner Goodwin. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll just note for the record that I believe these applicants, having been made prior to the date established in our recently reapproved policy for requiring some level of compensation to the public, puts them safe and square and clear of that obligation. So I'll note it would have been my preference for that to have been a part of this, but respect the will of the board and vote in support. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. The next public hearing is to consider a request to vacate a portion of alleyway in Block 4, Fields subdivision, Port Walton Beach. Mr. Autry.
Much like the last request, this was one that was presented prior to the policy revisions. I do want to point out that the Monday before that last Tuesday meeting, we had one other request that had come in, although I'm not sure off the top of my head if it was commercial or if it was residential, but there was only one other applicant that had come in that would fall under the old policy. When we present that, I will certainly have that information clarified. This request is from the Step 1 Automotive Group to vacate the alleyway between two parcels of property that they own along the Beale Parkway corridor. Again, this was presented previously and tabled. This is submitted and does not fall subject to the current, was submitted prior to and does not fall subject to the current policies in place. We've had no objections to the request, and if there are any questions for the board, be happy to answer them.
Open for public comment on this item. This time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Goodwin and a second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Autry. Department business. Mr. Stage for the airports.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Stage, Airport Director. Two, two parts with one, one request for your consideration. Put a couple slides up just to kind of orientate you on the situation or the plan per se. As you know, the airport has, has spent a number of years increasing the capacity and the throughput and major construction projects on the outbound side of of the airport. This is more concentrated on the inbound side, and you'll see from a top-down view, the highlighted box on the east side of the main terminal facility. It'll be highlighted area where all this construction is planned to take place with the expansion of the existing terminal building, roughly 30,000 square foot. Terminal canopy in the very south end of that for the 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 tugs and luggage and the renovation of these existing terminal building on the left-hand side in the pink color. And this next slide better dials it in to exactly what what the project entails. And you'll see on the left-hand side, the renovation and then the line delineation between renovation and the new addition. The renovation of the existing flat plates baggage claims units has already taken place on on the first one and planned on the second one soon with this contract. And then the new addition is roughly 22,000 square foot with two additional carousels. As mentioned, we have currently two now. This will be the addition of two additional ones. More space for the rental car agencies, and you'll see with the ITB that the airport put out, this is the the third, the third time we bid this project. We originally budgeted for this project in fiscal year '23 and '24 in design and then through construction. Unfortunately, didn't get a good responsive bid this past time. We had three very close, very good responsive bids. And and I'm here to request that the board approve the construction contract for the baggage claim expansion with the desk for Walton Beach Airport to the lowest responsive bidder, Rycon Construction, in the amount of $14,567,777, and construction paid services contract to ICE in the amount of $1,071,064, and authorize the chairman to sign the contracts. You'll see the ITB 40-24 Rycon in their amount in the construction period of roughly 450 days to final completion. And then the RFQ for the engineering consulting, construction management services that was accomplished just prior with infrastructure consulting engineering being the selected engineer firm. There are four funding agencies involved in this project, the FAA, the PFC, CFCs. Recall the budget presentation last week. We highlighted this specific project and and then CFCs and then airport. Airport's match is 10% to the 90% FAA, or excuse me, grant. It equates to about a million dollars of airport funds for the overall $16.5 million project. So we're excited to get this project going. And I request the board's approval. Rycon is here. Mr. Johnny Limbaugh is is here with Rycon Construction. They're new to to the area. And we have an extensive background. If you look at, if you look at page 839, I believe out of 1,500 in your agenda package, it has Rycon's resume and extensive background across seven major disciplines. They've covered all areas of construction in universities, healthcare, airports, you name it. So Johnny's here to answer any questions if you have any. And then obviously, I have my deputy director Chad Rogers here, who's going to head up spearhead this project so we can get this thing done with inside budget and hopefully ahead of schedule, and we'll be sitting nice next season. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, Chairman. Commissioner.
Commissioners? Mr. Ketchel.
This is my district, even though it's a wonderful county asset. So I'll move for approval with follow-up discussion. Can I get a second? So first of all, I just want to say, Mr. Stage, this is a wonderful project. It's much needed. We have grown our footprint to the place where we're bursting at the seams. It'll be so nice to have the additional space for the baggage area as well as for the rental cars. I understand that, and I don't see Jennifer here, but I'm sure Charlotte will take this back to her, that you'll be moving the fish tank, hopefully a larger fish tank. I mean, the kids love this. When they're waiting, when the parents are waiting for luggage, the kids love to look at the fish tank. And maybe we can make it lower so they don't have to climb up on the steps this time. That's a small detail considering all this. But thank you for the fact that our airport is paid off. I mean, I need to thank our fellow commissioners with the children here for Okaloosa Saves. We've lived it. This county has lived it. We live within our means, and not only that, but we have saved money, not only at the airport, but we have it in the bank. And I think that's important, and I wish our our national federal debt would pay attention to what the state of Florida and the county of Okaloosa has done. So thank you for this, and I'm very excited about moving forward with this expansion. It is so needed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I would like to mention this is absolutely in line with our master plan. This has always been the plan, so we should move along with the plan.
That's a good point. I should have said that.
Any further comments, Commissioners? All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stage.
May I say one more thing?
Yes.
To Roger's side, I have every confidence because I To Roger's, I have every confidence because I saw what he did with the allegiance. So you'll do a great job. Thank you so much for your work and being a part of the airport team.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Mr. Rogers, have you officially retired now?
Yes.
Congratulations.
From the Air Force.
Yes, from the Air Force. Congratulations, Colonel. Ah, Jennifer Adams, Tourism Development. Or all three of you.
Good morning, Commissioner Charlotte Dunworth, representing the Tourism Department. And I have Sharon Gold up here with me. She's our Destination Project Coordinator. So she will be spearheading this project as well as all of the other projects we have going on within the county. So we have before you today a proposal to replace the equipment, entirely new playground at Marler Park with proximity to both the Chautauqua Bay as well as the Gulf of Mexico. Marler Park is the perfect location to serve both locals and visitors. There are no neighborhood parks on Okaloosa Island. The goal for the park is to make it a one of a kind destination in South Okaloosa County that invites children of all ages to play in a safe environment. And the park is packed with both locals and visitors every weekend. So staff requested designs from three state contract playground contractors and Game Time offered the most innovative and exciting suggestions for the type of park that we are striving to be. So before you today, we are requesting about a one point two million dollar purchase order be issued for playground structures, safety surfacing, sail shades, installation, benches and coastal coding, as well as another about seventy four thousand dollar purchase order for signage, appliques, panels, graphics, branding, those types of expenses. Once the purchase order is received, the manufacturing lead time is approximately four months. So we would be looking to close the park later this year, undergo complete renovation and then reopen it in early spring before spring break of twenty twenty five. So we have some images here for you of what the current park looks like. It currently, it is the two darker shades on this diagram, and you can see the surface, there's just blank, empty space there with the surface is greatly deteriorating. That light tan area, the black is all of the deteriorated surface. On one side, we have very limited playground equipment. And on the other, we have just your basic playground equipment. Oops, wrong direction. Here you can see a better image of the surfacing that is deteriorating and the structures are faded. Obsolete broken pieces have been removed over the years. It is not very interesting for children and engaging for children. So we would look to reuse the sail shades and potentially the equipment, certain pieces of the equipment that are salvageable, we would be exploring other alternative locations for those. And so you can see here, if you recall that the original, the current footprint is just the two sail shades with nothing in between. The new part would, would be an expansive area combining all of that, and it would now put structures within the currently vacant space between the current sail shades. So I do have a bit of a, a flyover video so you can see what it will look like when it is complete. So.
Before you show the video, Chairman, may I? There's a, there's a, there's a, one of the playground equipment things has a shark. And I thought, considering the fact that there's been recent shark attacks, it might not be a good idea to be teaching kids to stick your arm in the shark. So we did take that one out and put what, a large fish in or something, a group?
Correct. Either a marlin or a grouper. I was going to mention that after the video, but thank you for mentioning it in advance.
Quick disclaimer and keep people.
Absolutely correct. Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Tomacek.
So again, this is an opportunity to provide a much more expanded playground experience, safer playground experience, branded experience for our youngest residents and visitors. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Chairman, I'll be happy to motion for approval. This is a great use of our tourism development dollars. I need to say here real quick that many people write and say, you know, why, why are you using tourism development dollars? Why don't you redo our roads? Agland's a mess and racetrack because we can't, because we have different pots of money that are designated and we cannot use that money for roads and that kind of thing. So what we can use is to do something like a playground, to do accessways, to do boat ramps, for marketing, for people who are going to come here and use it as well as our residents. So I think this is great. Congratulations on the graphics. I'm sorry about the shark thing, but the rest of it is fabulous. And I think, I'm going to ask you, Lynn, you have a six year old. What do you think? You think Eli would like that?
I, I was thinking that while I was watching it. I can't wait to take my son there.
Great.
I, I'm sure it will be crowded with lots of kids, both local and from out of town.
I think it's fabulous. It really does. And one other thing I have to say, you know, I was thinking about my own childhood. We used to build tree forts and get poison sumac and fall out and break our collarbones. And it's just so different now with kids in these, you know, parks that are designed for their safety. It's really great.
Mr. Ponder?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. Just, I want to congratulate your team for this. And Craig, I know you spend a lot of time with it as well. But it was, Sharon, it's fantastic. I mean, I told him the other day, I was just riding by it in, in my boat, and the park's just always crowded with people. And to Commissioner Ketchel's point, this, these are the wins that you're very grateful for, that not only can tourists take advantage of locals as well. And you mentioned it's going to be the only park of its kind on the island. So it's a great win for the locals out there, but also the people that don't live on the island who have kids who want to have a great day by the water. And so this is going to be a fantastic win for our community, for tourists and locals alike. And I appreciate y'all having the vision to, to look at that park and see the asset that it really is and create something around it. And so, well done. So look forward to seeing it in its finished product.
Chairman, one more thing.
Sure.
Splash pad. Hopefully we can design a splash pad for that area later. Is that in your mind, your thoughts?
That is, that is definitely in the five year plan.
Because kids love that with popsicles and water on a hot day. It's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodwin.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. First, you know, I guess I'll beat this term again, just as we kind of look at this part, you know, if we can continue to look at ways to enhance the, I call it the gatekeeping function. I still think that's a really important thing to protect this type of asset, you know, at Marler Park and that whole area that, you know, I know we've enhanced some fencing and some, some video surveillance, things like that. I, I, you know, just, we're spending a, a lot of county dollars on this, and I think it's a really good spend. Just want to make sure we're protecting it. So I'm sure that's not part of this particular expansion, but, you know, I just wanted to take an opportunity to say once again, and we can come up with a plan that does something on the, along the lines of the modeling that the state of Florida does, where they have a gatekeeper for these, for these great facilities. We manage the, you know, who comes and goes. I know that's an extra burden for the department, but I think it really protects and enhances the experience. And, you know, when you build something as cool as, as this, I think it warrants protecting it. So I just want to bring that up. The other thing, who did the 3D modeling for this?
Struthers Recreation.
Okay. All right. Do we use them for other expansions and, and park projects or?
Yeah, there's a, there's a number of recreation companies that are on state contract that we have them compete against each other for different projects countywide. And we've just, we've done some stuff up north. I know we've done some playground equipment up in Baker. I know we've done some up in Garden City area too. So we've been slowly replacing it all around our county because a lot of that stuff has gone dormant for a while.
I think the modeling is really neat. Do we have in-house talent that can do that type of 3D modeling? I don't know if that was done in AutoCAD or a different program, but I know it's pretty powerful design.
We have a lot of talented people, but I don't know that we have anybody that we assign to take the time to do all that when we can, but I know we get it. The consultants typically do it for our projects and stuff.
I think it's probably something we ought to look at having in-house. We have the resources to have some of those kind of talents, and we can buy the software and the, and the hardware to do it. Man, it would really be nice to be able to control our projects and be able to really, you know, sit down and be able to map these things out internally. Although the, the vendor in this case, I think did an excellent job. It'd be really cool to have that kind of power in-house. So.
Definitely gives you a different perspective because you can kind of experience it. And even buildings now, I know you can get software, you can walk through a building and get, you know, and see how that's being laid out.
So, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Boils?
I just want to go on record. I, I like the shark fine. Kids like sharks or whatever. Marlin's fine too. Also, I still encourage kids to climb trees and get poison sumac and do all of those things that kids actually need to do. This is a good, safe, lovely asset. I'm excited about it. Go climb a tree, kids.
Any further discussion?
I'm sure going to miss Commissioner Boils. The, I just want to say that this whole area down there is really getting an interesting facelift. There's picnic pavilions, there's interconnected trails with Veterans Park, we're getting the new bike path. Okaloosa Island's about ready to see some amazing things happen there. We are, this is really changing this area. And I just had to say with the beach accessways, the kayak lounge, I mean, there's just, in the ten years I've been here, you just can't, I mean, I can't believe everything that's happening. So thank you all for the work that you're doing on this, and I'm looking forward to seeing all these things come into play.
All in favor signify with aye. Opposed? That's just unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Autry.
Morning, Jason Autry, Public Works. We have one item for consideration. Don't know that I would have seen this one coming anytime soon, but here it is. This is our last request for Lime Rock to do stabilization on our dirt roads. It was started out as the fifty and five. I mentioned it at the budget hearing the other day. It's more of like a hundred and fifty and four. This is the last task order. We need to do stabilization of what was our two hundred miles of dirt roads starting about six, seven years ago. There will be about twelve miles of dirt roads that remain. However, those are part of capital projects such as Millside Road, High Ridge Road, or Steel Road. These are roads that we're going to improve through full design to become paved roads in the future. This request, the money has been allocated through Surtax. We actually allocated about two million dollars. In fact, we allocated two million dollars. There's a little bit left over. We'll take that leftover money when we're done and begin the stabilization process with asphalt. So this request is one that I hope to not make again, which is for Lime Rock to stabilize our dirt roads to the north end of the county.
Mr. Chairman, happy to make the motion to approve and some discussion if there's a second.
Motion by Commissioner Boils and a second by Commissioner Ponder. Commissioner Boils?
Yeah, just, you know, once again, thanks to my fellow commissioners for continuing to support this program. Jason, thanks to you and your team for implementing. I know the item kind of left open, the top capping material that will ultimately go on this line mark. I'm optimistic that we'll be able to continue to primarily now use hot mixed asphalt. And if we got that capacity in-house with that new paver and, you know, anything we can do, anything this board can do after I'm gone to continue the, you know, providing the support that Jason and his crew needs from a budgetary standpoint to go ahead and get those materials capped sooner rather than later. It's, you know, it's interesting to hear people, you know, the, the conversation now is when folks get the lime rock, they're really happy about it, and it's a significant improvement. But then they're understandably wanting to have that final stabilization done sooner rather than later. And that six month gap can sometimes be a little bit frustrating for folks. So the sooner we can kind of just keep, keep out on roll and then finish this project out, the, the better, in my opinion. So.
I will continue to push it regardless of your attendance here or not, because it is a huge savings for us and staff in terms of not having to go back out to dirt roads to maintain them. Once they're paved and they're capped like this, our maintenance effort is so much more reduced that we're able to go and do other things that are equally or more important.
Commissioner Ketchel?
I just want to say congratulations to Commissioner Boils on this one. Each of us, while we're up here, I think, try to make a difference in every, in every which way of our interest and understanding takes us. And I have to say that Commissioner Boils is, this is a great legacy that you're leaving. You did a wonderful job pushing this forward. So I know everybody in the north end appreciates it. It's an amazing thing to be able to say that Okaloosa County has done this.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Human Resources and Risk Management, Ms. Byrd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On May seventh, the board approved a business agreement with Northwest Florida Health Network to implement a community paramedicine program in conjunction with the establishment of Core Network in Okaloosa County. This agreement allows the county to fund, use funding from the program to outfit a type two V and an ambulance for community paramedicine program, as well as cost for staffing and equipment. Two of the currently approved paramedic physicians were designated for the program and the funding source for those physicians that previously came from general fund EMS account have been replaced with funding from the state opioid settlement funds. Public Safety is requesting two positions to backfill those positions. Senate Director Maddox would like to speak to the program.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, Pat Maddox, Director of Public Safety. This is not an additional budgetary impact. These are already budgeted positions. Since we have chosen our community paramedics internally, they would be dedicated to the community paramedicine program, paid for by a combination of the core and regional abatement fund dollars. And then this would simply be backfilling the two positions that we pushed in that direction. Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me, I can talk to the community paramedicine program a little bit for our friends at home. The community paramedicine program is an emerging field in healthcare where EMS providers are able to operate in expanded roles to increase access to care, facilitate appropriate use of emergency care resources, and provide referrals to programs and support, which were previously hard to find, especially for opioid addicted folks. This is what happens when a team of strategic partners says simply responding to crisis and progress is not enough. We've got to not only get ahead of the problem for people at risk, but provide robust follow-up to prevent the problem from recurring and affecting other members of the community. And that's where we were falling short. It's the recidivism rate of the opioid addiction, which is really hurting us in the hospital system, compressing our, our emergency rooms and causing delays in getting our ambulances back out on the road. In the case of this unique program, which is funded by a combination of core program dollars and regional abatement fund dollars, screening and treatment will specifically be focused on opioid use disorder and its associated comorbidities. Okaloosa County EMS has begun its community paramedicine program with a team of two community paramedics who are specifically assigned to this function rather than nine one one response. They will travel in a response vehicle adorned with a full body vinyl rig wrap with graphics designed to bring attention to the opioid epidemic and available modes of treatment. Right now, they're scooting around in a quick response vehicle, but when that ambulance becomes available, we'll be working with Mr. Tomacek and bring it before you to see what our graphics will look like before we wrap that vehicle. They'll carry with them specialized equipment and educational materials to assess and treat those suffering from opioid use disorder and its associated comorbidities with the goal of connecting the dots on additional services when appropriate. Some of those program highlights are, this is a mobile program, so it can be in-house or onsite. If somebody is experiencing homelessness, we can go to where they are and still provide the same level of a treatment, which is very unique. Individual screening and treatment for opioid use disorder and associated comorbidities, medication monitoring and reconciliation, and Istat blood analyzer with test cartridges specific for this effort, providing education on the dangers of opioid addiction and treatment, and follow-up referral to additional programs and resources with strategic partners throughout the Core Network. One major advancement in this arena is our participation in the post program, which is post overdose support team. It's a group comprised of recovery counselors from Brideway, law enforcement, and the EMS community paramedics who respond to acute overdose patients within forty eight hours to provide peer support, offer programs and other referrals for services in this very important window of time, that forty eight hour period after an overdose is the quote unquote virus remorse period. is the quote unquote buyer's remorse period where people are out of the acute emergency and realize what an impact this has had on their life. So that 48-hour window is an acute period of time for us to impact them, offer referrals and treatment, and kind of get them on the hook to getting their life in order. So it's a very important window of time. And this program is, is expansive. And I have a feeling it's going to expand throughout the, the community. Right now, with the limited time that we've turned on the paramedic program, the community paramedic program, we've already had 17 different referrals for that and a number of different contacts at other arenas. So it's, it's going to be impactful in our community. We're very excited. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions on the program if you have them.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Ponder. Second by Commissioner Ketchel. Commissioner Ponder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Pat, thank you. This program's spectacular. I know just hearing what I did on the front end and then now hearing the testimony of 17 people impacted already by the efforts tells me the ROI is already exceeding what we maybe even attended originally. But I've absolutely loved the 48-hour window, the touch points there and toward, because that's, that's, that's critical time. And I love that it's mobile. And so that's where we're going to them because we haven't had that. And I appreciate your leadership bringing this capability to our county. And as Kelly said, this is just a backfilling of what's already been out there. So it's, from a budget standpoint, it's actually, it's clean. But from my perspective, I mean, this is a major step. I mean, I know it seems like two people, okay, but this is what we're doing with it, I think is really key. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor signify with aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'm here today with Sean Fleming with our Garing Group, our consulting group, to bring you the fiscal year 25 benefits package for renewal. Just to let you know, we still have the same three health plans that we have. We're not making any changes with that. We have the base health savings plan, which is our base plan that we offer free to employees with a generous $1,500 contribution, HSA contribution, and then the two buy-up plans, PPO buy-up plans that employees have offered. If employees do have healthcare coverage somewhere else, the county offers $1,200 in an HRA to those employees. And we do have about 175 employees who take advantage of that because they may have military coverage or, or their spouse may have coverage somewhere else. Flex spending accounts, we're going to consider to continue to offer that. This program allows employees to take advantage of tax savings by qualifying, on qualifying medical expenses, by contributing tax exempt dollars to their accounts. Lockhart Williams manages that for us. We're going to be doing something a little bit different with the HSA card services. We're going to be bringing that in-house and dealing directly with HSA bank. We have found that we are doing that anyway, but simply paying a card fee to a middleman. The HSA bank is not going to charge us a card fee. And so there will be some savings there that will offset some other increases that we have. Our retirees, there is an 8% increase to the Blue Medicare Plan. We have a few retirees that take advantage of that, but it's, it's a very small program. Dental, the county's dental is with MetLife. And this year we received a 7% increase with that. The county pays 100% dental care for our employee only. And then employees have the option of paying for a family plan that's reasonable. That 7% increase equates to about a $37,000 increase for the board. And I'm estimating that the HSA card savings is about $21,000. So about a $16,000 increase for the board overall, which I think is not bad. Life and long-term disability, we have a one-year renewal. And we are asking that the board allow us to continue with that at no rate increase. They provide the life insurance and the long-term disability insurance that we provide free for employees. Vision is with IMED. We, we still have another renewal on that at no increase. And that's very, very reasonable. I used it just this week for my 10-year-old. And our wellness plan, as part of our Florida Blue Plan, we get a, a stop and a Wellness and Technology Fund annual provision, which is $75,000, that helps us fund the wellness plan for our employees. Employees can earn up to $400 a year by participating in health and wellness activities. One unique thing that we implemented last year was $200 of that 400 can be earned by buying a piece of equipment. They can buy a treadmill or, you know, something, or participate in something like a Weight Watchers plan or something and, and, or a gym and turn in that up to $200 and get that back. And so we have seen back in 2019, employees were participating and we were reimbursing about $20,000. This year we're in the 80s and we still have a quarter to go. So that's excellent participation from our employees. The employee benefits plan, we also provide benefits for the clerk, supervisor of elections, and property appraiser currently participate in these insurance programs. The employees of the tax collectors participate in the dental, life, long-term disability, and vision programs, but do not participate in the county's health or flex benefits program. We ask you to approve this program as outlined. We have to answer any questions or Mr. Fleming can answer any questions for you.
Motion for approval?
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Ponder. Any discussion?
I just want to congratulate Ms. Byrd. She, you're doing a fabulous job. I mean, this is not easy. We, we saw increases year after year. Thank you for all the many changes you've made that not only have enhanced benefits to our employees, but also done a cost savings for the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open for additional public comments if there are any. Seeing none. Commissioners, minute. Commissioner Goodwin?
Nothing further today. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Ketch?
Well, you mentioned it earlier, but I just want to invite everybody to the groundbreaking of the ag building at the fairgrounds tomorrow. It'll be under the Miss Roos Farmers Market Pavilion. This is a really big deal. There has not been an agricultural building built in the state of Florida since Governor DeSantis became governor. And we made it a priority three years ago and asked him for this because Hurricane Sally had destroyed what was left of this terrible building we used in the South End. This is going to enhance our ability to offer master gardener classes, agricultural 4H, but also cooking classes, organic gardening, all sorts of things that make a difference in people's lives little by little and increase their health. So please come at 7:30 in the morning, tomorrow morning. It'll be quick because it's hot. And that's why we're doing it so early. But thank you all for, for attending if you can.
Mr. Ponder?
Yeah, I'll just say, Commissioner Ketch, I don't know if I'll be able to make it down to the groundbreaking, but congratulations. I know that's a project you've been pushing hard on. This time, hold your groundbreaking a little further off the highway.
Two, two very swift things. Mr. Camper, I'm going to ask you as I asked them, but I think it would be very beneficial to us to seek services, whether in-house or from an outside source, to come up with a professional brochure that gives kind of a dummy guide to development, or at least a simple pathway of development, so that people can see what the steps are. It'd save a lot of questions on, on both of our sides. And then also for building permits, if we could do something that, that tangibly someone could pick up a brochure that steps them through the process of building permits. Just wanted to see if there was consensus for us to ask staff to follow through in that direction to see if we could have something that, that's, that's able to be given to folks. Mr. Ponder?
Sure. Thank, I think it's a great idea, but I'd also add just even as simple as a QR code, something that we can, you know, somebody on the go, they can scan it and go right to it versus, you know, maybe some rack cards would be great as a flyer, but also just using, yeah, so that's what you're saying. Because I think it's, it's good for the community to have that simpler way to get to it, but also do some digital stuff as well.
So in asking this, Mr. Camper, I'm not, not pushing that it's an effort that you put on your already incredibly hardworking staff. If, if we could look outside, I think that would be helpful. And you could just provide the information and someone else could put it together if that's, if that's possible for you to explore however you choose. Mr. Clerk?
There should be an app for that.
Right. Well, thank you for that. All right. With that, um, yes, sir.
If I can have just one minute. This board had a tremendous amount of just good information before you today. And we're right in the middle of our budget season. I, you know, I just want to thank this board for your guidance, your leadership, your vision. I mean, we've gotten a lot accomplished in the last 10 years. I can recall 14 years ago when I was in Jason's role and we're sitting around trying to figure out what we're going to do with Sandy Rose. And we were putting, we were putting 30-year-old ground up asphalt down on Rose, just trying to maintain them. And so we were just trying to come up with ideas and methods where we could do something with our roadways. And this board has provided that leadership. The explosive growth we're seeing at the airport, what Tracy's done and paying down that debt. I mean, Jennifer and the TDD and their continued growth. And we're building a destination park on the island. And the work that Kelly's doing in HR and risk and bringing on Garing a couple of years ago was a game changer for this county. We were having year after year, just, just increasingly higher costs with healthcare. We brought them in. We've held the line on healthcare. It's just a testament to this board and what you're doing. I get the honor of leading this group. And, you know, we're all oaring in the same direction. It's because of your guidance. And I just wanted to say that. So thank you, sir.
Sir. Mr. Hofstadter, you do a great job leading the staff of this county. Was there a big ask that you were following up?
It's just, we, we have our next budget workshop. And I can recall my first budget in 14, 15, when that guy just raked me over the coals for about 30 minutes. So, you know, it's been tough. And it's been a lot of work to get here. And it's because of y'all. I just wanted to point that out.
Pay increase, right. So can I say one quick thing?
Yes.
Just, you know, it's, it's been a, it's a real pleasure to work with everybody. It is your leadership, John, but it's also that this, everybody up here, in addition to the, all the staff, we see each other as a team. I really feel that. And we, it's not about our careers and making us look good. We get a lot of the public stuff, which is good and bad. But it's the fact that we really do care about this county and we want to make a difference. Everybody lives here. We love it. And the fact that we are so debt-free is just, it's unbelievable in a time like this. And, and because of that, our employees benefit. Also, I want to say this really loudly. We have not increased taxes for how many years now? 10 years? 10 years at least? Which is another testament. We've been able to do all of this without increasing taxes.
All right. Meeting's adjourned.